Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, Comero City Council Work Session. This is a hybrid work session and as I mentioned in the previously, we're going to start having hybrid work sessions. So you're always encouraged to come to council chambers. And so with that, we will do, can I have you do roll call? All right, we'll do roll call.
Councilmember Lea Adalha.
She is excused this evening.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Kathy.
Present.
Councilmember Allen Soltat.
She's excused this evening.
Councilmember Michael Althaus.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Acabbi.
I think Peter might have froze up.
No, I'm not. I can hear you guys. But I can hear you now.
We're doing roll call. Are you present?
Yeah, I'm here. Impressive.
Councilmember Cala Barlow.
Present.
And Teddy Sullivan.
And I'm here. All right, we will turn it over now to the item agenda we have, which is the strategic plan discussion, the draft focus area work plan. And I believe Councilmember Bobby, you might want to check and see if you have the link to getting into the program.
Yes, I am logged in.
Okay, excellent. So thank you all. Tonight is an important night. It's important for a variety of reasons. We're testing out a process that we hope is going to take us through the review of the strategic plan draft over the next couple of sessions, work sessions. So we're always looking for review and feedback, if you have any, either during the meeting or and or particularly after the meeting. But let's go ahead and jump right in. We're going to talk about the strategic plan tonight. So we've got two things that we want to do tonight. We want to first, um, it's, tonight is the first of three work sessions where we're going to be providing draft strategic plan materials for council to review and discuss and to provide us with some input. And tonight is the first over, we're going to do a first overall look at the structure and the review of some of the work that council has already completed in our two June retreat sessions. And then we're going to also walk the council through a process where we're going to apply the prioritization criteria that you all reviewed in June against two of the focus areas for, uh, that we've drafted. And then next work session, which is the September twenty-third, we're going to walk through the same prioritization process for two more focus areas. And then finally, on Tuesday, October fourteenth, we'll do that prioritization process for the last two focus areas. And then we will be to the point where we're going to basically have an overall full draft of a strategic plan for you to review through the end of October and into November. Our hope is that we will have a strategic plan adopted by resolution before the end of November. So um, a couple of things before we actually get started, just a few things to keep in mind here. So we're going to run through a draft of the document itself. It should have been in your packet. So we'll have it up on the screen, but you'll also be able to review it at your leisure in your packet. Um, please keep in mind that this is a work in progress. So we are working on this almost daily. Um, we are going to be asking for council input throughout the genesis of this and the completion of this document. Right now, it is, it is changing pretty much daily as we go in and update things. And there will be a final review that will happen. This is the council's document and it will be adopted by resolution. So what we'd like to do next is to, the clicker works for me. It does not seem to be. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and run through the document, just kind of looking at the structure and give you somewhat of an outline and an update on different parts and pieces. Um, so we are, uh, this is our table of contents. So this is what we're going to, we're going to be running through everything except for the appendices that are listed at the end of the document. So we intend to have a welcome letter that will be from both the mayor as well as council. We feel like this is a collaborative document that is being guided by the council members. So we want to be inclusive in terms of that welcome letter. And then we'll also have the different acknowledgements of city council members as well as management team. And then obviously giving some recognition to our consultant, Amy Leniker. Uh, then we're going to get into just some introductory explanatory text before we get too far into the meat of the document. So in this section, we're going to talk briefly about what it is that we did and why. That'll be just a brief paragraph. We are going to define some terms, particularly as they apply to this document. And the terms that we're going to define are those that you see listed. Um, we put in a, uh, an example of what this is going to look like or by defining the vision statement that you see here. So this is, um, this is important in terms of keeping people oriented around the intent behind the different parts of this strategic plan. And I should say, please, if you, this is a work session. So if you have any questions as we're going through this, please don't hesitate to speak up and or raise your hand and we'll try to keep track of that. I do need some specific input from you all in this particular section that we're going to run through, which is also part of the introductory text. So if you recall at your June twenty-eighth meeting, you provided us with some review of the mission and the vision statement. We also talked about the value statements. We're now called what were previously called beliefs. You agreed to call values. So what is showing in this part of the document are those, are the text of those different components. And what I would like to have your input on, and first by way of explanation, uh, we talked about updating and refreshing the vision statement. And so what you currently see here in this document on the vision statement is, I believe, the updated, what I did was I took our existing vision statement and I used Microsoft Copilot, which is essentially an AI assistant, um, AI formatted assistant that helps with drafting and language. And I edited what, uh, Copilot gave to me as a result. And this is essentially what it came up with. Um, it is intended to be a refreshed statement from where it was. I'm having a hard time seeing this. It's intended to be a refreshed statement from what it was. And I'm just curious, if you were to read this, how it lands with each of you? Do you have any thoughts?
Um, thoughts? Instead of tomorrow, recommend future.
Okay. Can you read it? Can you see it? Are you, can you see it? Okay, okay. Any other thoughts on? Feedback? Okay, so, um, so then under the mission statement, and again, this is just, uh, this is just the first opportunity. This will, you will have many other opportunities to take a look at this. So in the next session titled, uh, section titled mission, the first one is our existing mission statement. And then what I did is I did the same thing. I copied that and I asked Copilot to provide me with some suggestions. And so the first, um, uh, italics text, which is in the middle of these three paragraphs, that these three sentences is what it first gave me. And then it said, would you like a more public, uh, would you like a version of this statement that is branded towards the public? And I said, yes, and it gave me the last set, uh, section here in this piece where it is a much shorter statement. And so I'm curious if you have any thoughts about either of those in general, if you prefer one or another. Um, I think one of the comments that we got pretty regularly, I think, as we were reviewing this document in, uh, or these documents in, in, on the twenty-eighth of June is to use plain language. Um, so I'm curious if you have any thoughts about uh, whether or not we accomplished that? Or I should say Copilot.
I think for the third one, where we work side by side with our community, I think that thing that gives me pause is there is sometimes where we don't, where, where we are working to specifically serve our community members. And sort of the side by side by thing kind of throws me off rather in partnership where you can have different levels of leadership in that sense while still maintaining a partnership.
It said we work in partnership with our community to provide.
Yeah, I think that makes me a little more comfortable, that one.
Any other thoughts?
Are you asking sort of the, do we prefer the, the middle one or the first and last one?
I'm asking if you, which of any of those three you prefer? If you have thoughts about any of the three of them.
I think the thing about the first one that I like is the description of the supportive social fabric. I think that speaks to our efforts around things like housing and human services that we strive to provide. Um, that is not necessarily captured in the third one, but is in the first two. And I think where everyone belongs sort of is a, is a different sentiment than strong social or supportive social fabric.
So it's a different thought?
Yeah.
And both are important?
I think the third one, where you have build strong welcoming neighborhoods, that kind of gets at belonging in a way already. So where you have welcoming neighborhoods where everyone belongs, I would, I would assume a welcoming neighborhood. It's like everyone does belong in a welcoming neighborhood already. So maybe you could strike, everyone belongs, um, and just add like with a supportive social fabric or something like that.
Yeah.
Or with a connected and like, I like inclusive social fabric. Maybe that's a hybrid. It's like inclusive social fabric. That speaks to both belonging as well as services and programs that you do to help our community members.
So that third one, we're working in partnership with our community to provide social services, protect our environment, grow our economy and build strong welcoming neighborhoods. Uh, and then adding the inclusive, um, social fabric at the end of that.
Yeah.
Anybody have any thoughts about that?
So social fabric, what exactly does that mean?
That can mean a variety of different things to different people. I think ultimately, in, in my opinion, I think the way we've used it in city documents in the past is that it kind of means, um, a community that has services to help address crises and help provide support to people who are in need. Whether that's, you know, the work that we do on housing issues, um, whether that's the human services program funding or the CDBG funding that we help distribute to try to create a more dynamic social services program within the community. Um, but I think that's sort of what that is getting at is sometimes you need supportive programs and services to help people who are in crisis or in need. And then that's a value that's part of our mission.
If we, if we say we provide essential services, doesn't that implies all of that social fabric?
I mean, I'd like to think that housing and human services are essential services. Um, the truth is that they're discretionary services in terms of our funding. We don't have dedicated funding accounts to provide for those things. So I, I think like when I read essential services, I think more like roads and water and utilities, things like that, less services that we are placing at the top of the hierarchy in terms of prioritization for those discretionary funds because they don't come from a dedicated account. They're all general fund investments in our community.
I, yeah, I, I see what you're going to make, but at this point in time, I think we're just splitting hairs. If we're providing essential services, water is essential, light is essential. Um, when we have residents who are unable to provide, uh, who's water and sewer has been shut off because they're unable to pay, we have a program to take care of that. We don't have a program that provides housing for the general, uh, residents of Tomwater. We might be able to help you if there is a community program that does that.
I mean, we do have a number of programs that we work on that provide housing, right? We've got the funding that we used, that we were working on with together. We've got the senior housing funds that we did a couple of years ago. That's been our entire focus of CDBG funds for the past, like, six or eight years, like the past three rounds that we've done it. So I, we, we invest a lot in terms of human service. We also have a line item in the budget every year for human services funding, which we voted on a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago, in terms of distributing those, those funds.
Thank you for bringing that up. Essential services includes all of those. So in, in order to delineate a social fabric that we are going down the way by saying, uh, not only do we do this, we would do that, we do this. The English language is pretty much, uh, is pretty much, uh, self-descriptive. If I say to you, we, we, we have within the city of Tomwater, essential services. Unless I'm saying, for example, housing, we pay a sewer and da, 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 da. Their essential services is implied in that.
I think by your logic, you could also.
Housing is essential. Transportation is essential.
Your economy and also build strong welcoming neighborhoods. Those are also all essential services. I think the point of this exercise is to try to highlight the things that we want to display are our mission in particular. So if there's, there are things like that that rise, that rise to the top, then I think it's worth splitting the hairs to actually discuss what ones we want to include. To my opinion, would be things that also touch on sort of that human services kind of support.
Would you write down, we provided services, I would just go by platitude. I mean, you see that, you see that platitude away as actually providing the services because, uh, yes, this, this, this doing and showing, are we doing or are we trying to show?
I think, um, yes. So I think to your, uh, to answer your question, Peter, I think we actually are doing both. We are showing and we are doing. Uh, Councilmember Jefferson, did you have, wanna provide some?
Yes, I, I wanted to say that I prefer number three because it's bottom line upfront. There's no fro- fluff we lead with, and it's just saying, like we said, we want plain English. We work side by side with our communities to provide essential service, services, protect our environment, which was important to Councilmember Dahlhoff, grow our economy, right, community development, all that good stuff, and build strong, welcoming, inclusive neighborhoods.
Okay, um, I would, if, if, if anybody else has any thoughts, we can, um, please, um, please, uh, throw them out here. And then what I would suggest is we can come back with something uh, in the next round.
I just, um, I, I'd just like to say that I, uh, I like the statement, social fabric. I think, you know, when you think of fabric, think of that word. It's something that's sewn together. It's something that, uh, holds, holds up. It's a fabric of something is, uh, is really an important statement to me. And I think that we're trying in Tomwater here to do the things that we say on there, essential and not. Uh, I think that they're all, I think what we're trying to do is all essential. But we're trying to weave together something that draws people together, that meets their needs. It does, we're creating a fabric, a design, uh, something like that. That's a, that's what that word and, and, um, idea conjures up in my mind that I, that I see as a, as what, as the kind of city I'd like to leave, live in that has that kind of fabric at their base. So anyway, I just want to throw that out for the use of that, that word.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Holtz?
Thank you. I, I, I also like social fabric and I also like the word belong. I understand that welcoming neighborhood should, everybody should belong. But I also know that their neighborhoods where everybody waves to each other, but, um, there might not be that sense of belonging. So I do think that there's a difference there as well. But I, that social fabric, to me, that really paints, um, a beautiful picture and I like that.
Okay, well, let us, um, let us, uh, take this one back and thank you for all of the input. I think what we'll do is we'll work with the third statement and, and try to incorporate all, all that you've provided us. Um, so the next thing I'm, I'm going to ask just a question. Are you, how do you feel, we have not updated the values yet, those value statements? There's people, environment, uh, opportunity, uh, excellence, uh, uh, yeah, partnerships, learning and, um, excellence. I, I've got them all over the place. We, we reordered the environment and excellence. That's what confused me. Um, so we need to, we need to redo those based on the review. We need to rewrite those based on your review. Are you, are you okay if we do the same exercise of, um, taking our existing language and using, uh, Copilot to provide you with some suggestions? Or, or, or not? It's basically, I'm asking permission to use Copilot. Any thoughts?
Listen, um, if we are going to go down on this exercise, we're going to be stuck just working on a page one hour at a time. Why don't staff deal with this kind of stuff? And let us worry about the, uh, about the stuff that really matters, which is what the strategic plan, what that does. The vision, mission and value, that's a dollar a dime statement. It doesn't really do much. It just stays on the paper.
Uh, yes, we can, uh, we can definitely do that. And I, um, I think ultimately it's up to the council members to decide amongst yourselves which things you want to review and, and discuss and debate and, and ultimately to make a decision about those things. Um, if you're okay, we'll move forward and, and use Copilot as a way to make some suggestions. It's very cost effective in terms of our time. Um, and it's kind of fun, actually. Um, it's, uh, the options that it gives you are good and I believe it is secure. Lance is in the audience and so I can assure you that the way we use, I used Copilot was very secure. I didn't add any new, um, personal information. And we did actually edit, um, ultimately, we would edit, um, the rephrasing and make it our own. So if you're okay with that, we will take the next couple of pages and just, uh, come back to you with some suggestions. Councilmember Jefferson?
Yes, I believe that we were good with the values. We agreed that we wanted to keep them like that.
Uh, we, we do want to keep all of our values, but we actually, we actually went through each value statement and there were several, uh, comments from council members to refresh and update them.
All right. Are you going to, are you going to do the same with the environment one?
I, I would do it with all of them, all of the values, people, environment, opportunity, partnership, learning and excellence. And I can do it the same way. I can show you the original statement and then you can look at the, the reworded suggestion, rephrased suggestion from Copilot and you can pick which one you like.
So our values are going to remain the same. It's just the wording we're going to change, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the word that often came up as we were talking in, on June twenty-eighth is refresh. These values, I was able to find these value statements in a document back in two thousand and ten. And so they are longstanding, which is really phenomenal, quite honestly. And, and we review these values every time, uh, the mayor and I meet with a, a new employee, which we do, we, we meet with every new employee and we go through these and we talk to them about, about these values. So, um, they're great. And I think the, the, what I heard on June twenty-eighth is just, let's just refresh it a little bit. Um, so if you're okay, then we'll come back to you with, with those suggestions. Okay. So then the next part of the document is going to be on what we're calling the implementation framework or, uh, one of the, one of the, um, one of the example, um, strategic plans that we've looked back across this tools for success, which I really kind of like. And it basically is just going to be a summary of, um, of the, the topics that you see listed here, the four topics that you see listed, a little bit about, uh, who does what. Um, it's going to talk a little bit about timeline and process. Um, it's going to have a very brief summary of the, the things that you are using to prioritize the work of the, in the strategic plan. And this is actually going to be the focus of your work, uh, with Amy Leniker on Saturday, September twentieth. It's going to be talking about the timelines and the processes for keeping the strategic plan updated, uh, which will then ultimately guide the work of staff every year. There's also going to be a conversation about how you go about adding new items midstream. If there's a new opportunity or a new initiative or a new policy that comes up and you're, you know, in the middle of the year, how do you add that into, into the, the work plans that we're going to be, um, uh, developing here out of this document? So there's a lot more to come in this particular section and, um, it will look mostly be filled out, um, after your work session with Amy Leniker on Saturday, the twentieth. So then, uh, we have our focus areas. So you recall part of what we did, uh, in June, uh, was to talk about, um, using more broadly worded uh, phrases and words to describe each focus area. Um, so we, uh, took the focus area words that you gave us at the last session. Uh, each of those focus areas has a goal and that goal statement is actually the previous priority that was listed on the strategic priorities and goals. So for example, um, we came up with vibrant, livable and inclusive community as a focus area. And we got that from our existing priority, which is build a community recognized for quality, compassion and humanity. So, uh, the previous, what was previously called a, a priority becomes the book, uh, excuse me, the goal statement for each of the, each focus area. So that's what you see here. So we've got the, um, uh, vibrant, livable and inclusive communities. Uh, we have environmental stewardship, which means, which, uh, goal is to be a leader in environmental health and sustainability. The community bulk mobility focus area is to create and maintain a transportation system safe for all modes of travel. Health and safety is to provide and sustain quality public safety services. Growth and development is to pursue and support targeted community and economic development. And then Tomwater excellence is to refine, uh, the goal statement is refine and sustain a great organization. So those are the fun foundational pieces of the strategic plan. And then what we've done with the remainder of this strategic plan will be And then what we've done with the remainder of this strategic plan will be essentially each focus area. Has a series of action items, and so those action items are more broadly stated. Goals, ways in which the city intends to achieve the goal statement. These action items are largely taken from the existing priorities, strategic priorities and goals documents. So a lot of this language should look really familiar to you. We tried to take some of the more broadly worded statements. And and have them be an action item. Um, there's going to be one more step that I'm gonna talk about here shortly and just a little bit. Where we get to some of the more detailed goal statements from those strategic priorities and goals. But in essence, these are the action items for this. Each focus area has these various action items that you see in the draft. So. We then also identify the lead department. That's responsible for addressing the issue. Um, you will find and we expect that there will be lots of. Dual co-leads. Um, the way we are working now as an organization internally is much. Uh, is is very collaborative, um, so we don't, it, there is never, there's rarely is there just one department. That's going to be exclusively responsible for one action item in your in your strategic plan. Um, but we're still working through that, and we've attempted to identify the leads for now, at least as they stand. In these different focus area. Uh, action items. The intent of these action items are that they would be. Longer term. So this strategic plan is a six-year strategic plan to help get us through the next. This this coming year as well as the next following biennial, biennial, the next three biennial budget periods. So the timeframe is twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-two. Um, and so these are intended to be action items that will hopefully be a few years. Long-lived, so that it's not like next year we're gonna have a whole different series of action items. They will, there will be different activities. For example, when you talk about increasing affordable housing in Tumwater and including permanent supportive housing. That's something we're going to be doing for a long period of time. So that's an action item that I would expect. Is is going to be fairly long-lived in terms of being a priority for the state of Tumwater. So we have each of the focus areas that have, that are identified, they will each have their page, dedicated page or so. Not necessarily a lot of detail, just this pretty direct information about what the city's focus area is, what its goal is. And the action items to get there. And then we will have, uh, we do, uh, we will have a series of appendices. We do have the prioritization criteria, so. You recall, we had a pretty lengthy conversation about this at the June twenty eighth meeting. Um, so we are. Going to be using these questions. In the second half of tonight's presentation, but for now, I just would ask, I can stop right there and ask if there are any questions.
How how does this correlate with what we're working on with Amy? Is this where we provide initial feedback? That will further refine a product and Amy will help us finalize things on the twentieth? Or how how does this document interact with that work?
Amy is going to be working with you all to come to agreements on the processes and the timelines for keeping all of this work. Updated and real and and ongoing. And so, um, so this, uh, what you're seeing is essentially going to be the content of the strategic plan. Um, and then, uh, the next thing, do I have? Uh, in my, in the presentation, is there another slide that gets to the council annual work plan slide example? Oh, right there it is. So, uh, so the other important piece of the strategic plan, which will be. An appendix. Um, each year, there will be an annual work plan, so these are, these will be the council's work plans. For each of the focus areas. So what you see here is what those annual work plans will look like. So, uh, what will be in the meat in the body of the comprehensive, uh, excuse me, of the strategic plan are basically the first. Four columns on the left. So this is the vibrant, livable, inclusive community. You see the goal statement. The first two action items are listed here, the lead departments, and then if you look at the far right. Um, at the far right column, that's the activity that we anticipate as staff that we will be able to accomplish. Related to that specific action item. And so each year, those are the, that's the column that's going to be updated annually. So part of what we need you to do with with Amy is work through the process and the timeline for. Um, how we are continuing to keep this a living, breathing document. And and again, the the primary purpose of this document is so that the council can can have a framework. Within which we have a conversation about priorities. So that staff can then learn and understand and know what those priorities are. So we are. Organizing our work and our efforts around those priorities. Um, so annually, we will try to get this type of information complete so that we are making budget decisions. And we are making budget proposals that are reflective of the council's priorities as expressed in these documents. So each year, each focus area is going to have one of these council annual work plans associated with it. We'll use this work plan as a way to report back to you. Throughout the year, I don't know how frequently yet, that's something that you can talk about with Amy. How often do you want to see an update from staff on where where we are with these different activity work plan tasks? These are generally. You, we are working on this level, on the work plan level with each, with with all of our department directors currently. Um, by the time we get to the end of the year and we're asking you to review the entirety of the strategic plan. It will include these work plans for twenty twenty-six. Um, they are primarily developed by staff, but the, a lot of these work plan tasks are some of the more discreet. Specific items that were listed as goals under the previous strategic priorities and goals document. I would, I would compare this. View right now to, um, uh, something very similar to what you're used to seeing from Brad and Longreach Planning Work Plan. Each year. So we would be essentially doing that same process with the strategic plan. Focus areas and action items every year with the council. Any comments? Okay. Next step. Okay, we're going to, uh, work on this next steps in this process, which is to take. That list of criteria, that list of questions. And we're going to apply that, those questions to the action items in each of two of the focus areas. That we have drafted for you. The two that we're gonna talk about tonight are the vibrant, livable, livable and inclusive community focus area. And the health and safety focus area. So as you are kind of pulling up your mentimeter and 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 trying to get to the point where you're ready to go. I want to just talk a little bit about this process. Um, it is going to feel pretty clunky, uh, at first. I I would just ask you all to to be patient. Both with us and with each other. The questions are not a survey or a test. They are intended to be a way in which you can have a conversation about these different action items. Um, they are intended to, um, they they're they're not right or wrong. They are provided to you in the. As a series of questions that need to be answered. There are going to be questions that you aren't necessarily gonna feel like you know the answers to, uh, which is, which is fine. Um, uh, we want you to talk through those questions with each other, and then if your staff is here, if you have any specific. Questions about those things. Um, we're gonna try and work through this process tonight with these two focus areas. And then to take the next two council work sessions and and finish up the other four focus areas with this same process. So hopefully, I believe that as you are, as we go through this process, it's gonna get easier and easier, and it's not gonna maybe feel quite so clunky. We are always willing to hear feedback from you. If we need to make some adjustments midstream, we can, we can do that. So. We're gonna compile the results of this as well as the next four, excuse me, the next four focus areas, the next two work sessions. And then when we come back to you with the completed draft, you'll see focus areas that are prioritized. The action items are prioritized based on this input that you're giving to us. So right now, the only people participating in these these mentimeter processes. Uh, in these next three work sessions are the council and 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 Mayor Sullivan. That doesn't mean that you can't mess, that you can't adjust, not mess, mess with is what I was thinking, but. When we come back to you, for example, in, um, in October on this particular focus area. And we have, let's say, this is the order in which the priority comes out based on this process. If you decide that promote equity and inclusion needs to be the number one priority, then you at least can have that conversation as a council. And you you understand sort of what your decision-making, um, criteria are for those kinds of decisions. So. The mentimeter process, this process tonight and the next three, uh, two work sessions is not the be all and all of this. It's just an initial, uh, way in which we can get some prioritization and alignment around what the top priorities are. For our efforts. And what we're prioritizing again are the action items within this focus area. Let me see if I have any more thoughts here. So we're gonna, so 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 some of these questions will be yes or no. Answers or some other binary this or that answer. Some of the questions you'll be able to use. Uh, the mentimeter process to have a sliding scale, um, so you can have some measure of. You know, qualitative, uh, variation in 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 your answer. There aren't necessarily right or wrong answers, although some of them, um, uh, will need to talk through, so you begin to. Understand the intent behind each of these different questions. And then the way this will appear on your screen. Each focus area, for each focus area of these two that we're looking at tonight. There's going to be a question, which is the criteria, and then it's gonna have the action, all of the action items. For that focus area for that same question. So you're answering the same question for all of these four different things in this case. Um, as we go through this process. So but if, by the end of the night, we will have gone through our list of criteria questions two times. Once for vibrant, livable and inclusive communities, and then once for health and safety. So. I think we're ready to get started. So the first set of criteria questions were under the heading consistency and alignment, and this is about whether or not. It's consistent with the vision, mission and values. Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan or some other plan or policy? Adopted plan or policy. Does the, when we say this, it's the action item. So does this action item significantly advanced an adopted plan or policy? Or does it make, uh, progress towards some other existing objective? So the. Oh, that's okay. So these are, we'll, we'll, yeah, thank you. We'll, we'll get back to that. So. This is the first test question. So in the vibrant, livable and inclusive communities focus area, we have these four. Action items. For each action item on your minty screen with your phone, you can vote, and these are all yes or no questions. Does increase affordable housing in Tumwater, including permanent supportive housing, is that consistent with the city's vision, mission and values? Yes or no? Perfect. And you can do that for each of those four question, four, uh, four, uh, action items. We've got two people out of eight.
I guess you have to hit submit, right?
Yes, yes, yes. So you can vote, vote on each one, and and actually, if you decide you want to change your mind on one of these. Uh, that's fine, but you do need to hit submit at the bottom of your screen. You might have to scroll down a little ways and hit submit. Sure. Yeah, Kelly, Kelly, while you're, while you're finishing up your voting here, Kelly talked about, reminded me, we're gonna tally these later. So we will come back and and show you the the outcomes of this. Hang on just a second. So, so does any, do any of you want to talk about this question at all with regard to these? Four action items? Okay, well, let's go on to the next one then. So same four action items. Are they consistent with the comprehensive plan? And I think there's, there are a couple of ways to look at this. And I think I would, uh, generally, I would say, look at each of these questions pretty literally. So. The first one is, is a yes, I would. Brad's here, but I I think he would be not happy if it was anything but yes, but yes. Our comprehensive plan requires us to increase affordable housing. Does our comprehensive plan specifically say develop partnerships and strategic strategies to improve municipal service, help reach people in need? It may not, and that's okay. It doesn't mean that it isn't an important thing if you say no or yes to one or the other of these items. Or any of these action items.
So Lisa, upon a correction, if I hear you correctly, you want us to focus on going forward? If that is what we are either doing or going to be doing.
Yeah, so, so, yes, I believe the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, thank you.
So if our action item is to promote equity inclusion within the Tumwater community, is that consistent with our comprehensive plan? That's how I would look at each one of these.
See, the challenge for me then is I'd have to go into the comprehensive plan to see.
And so that's why we have Brad here, and we can, so so perfect. Angela, that's perfect. That's like. That's the kind of discussion and conversation we hope that you all can have. Brad, can you answer the question? Uh, or do you have any thoughts on how to answer this question? For those four action items?
Yes. Very quickly, anything that you say will not upset me, so don't worry about that. Don't try to make me happy. I think if, based on the discussions we've been having with the council for the comprehensive plan update, I think you have a very good idea of where we probably are. In terms of our requirements for dealing with housing and affordability. Um, so I think that's pretty, I don't want to say self out. It's not pretty obvious. I would suggest that the Metropolitan Parks District initiatives would definitely be something. That we would have to look at as part of the update for the Parks and Rec Plan, uh, given that the existing plan really doesn't. Given that the existing plan really doesn't, it didn't anticipate a parks district. So that's definitely something that would be, have to become consistent with the comp plan. So we're in the process of doing that. As Lisa said, the devolved partnerships and strategies to improve municipal service delivery to people in need. It depends. We don't, we don't have a human services element of the comprehensive plan. So for example, if we are talking about ways to support people staying housed, whether or not we're talking, say, homeless services or renter assistance or things like that, that probably is covered by our housing element. But if we're talking about other things, like say, supporting food banks or other things in a much more direct fashion, we probably don't deal with that in a comprehensive plan, which is, which is okay, but that just means that this would have to work in tandem with what the cop plan may say.
So I think that, that, that staff can answer this better than I can. Because you're, you're, you know, you're in the comprehensive plan every day where I will just look at the comprehensive plan. So I think staff is, is better answering this. Am I alone?
I, I, I think, I'm, I'm sure there are others who will add to the conversation and thank you for that, Angela. And there are several questions in here that are like that. And that's why we have staff here so that we can help you answer that. But there are definitely some questions that are asked in here that are completely yours to make and to answer. And so, yes, we're here to help you. And the alternative that we discussed was coming to you with some answers to some of these questions. But knowing which, which question every single council member might need help with answering is not necessarily something we were ready to do. So instead, we're here to help you answer those questions. So I feel like in, in this particular case, I, you could, you could say that all, all four of these action items are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So let's move on to the next question. So for these four action items, do they significantly advance an adopted plan or policy? And again, this is specifically an adopted plan or policy. So it might be something other than a comprehensive plan. We have, help me out with, we have a water system plan, we have other plans which are actually adopted by the. Are they referenced?
Reference, but also adopted on their own.
I gotta write the answers before I start.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, let's move on. Oh, one more. Don't forget to hit submit. There we go. Does it make progress towards an existing objective? You know, one of the, one of the conversations we can have after, after this evening, if I would have you think about this a little bit as you're going through this process, maybe we need to cut back on the number of questions. So in this case, this is a sliding scale, right? Is this a sliding scale option? Yeah, so in this case, there are ways in which you can scale your answer. Waiting for one more answer. There we go. Okay. So the next set of questions, these are, are some fundamental questions about obligations that we have, for example. So, or, or things that are important in terms of, from, just from a basic financial perspective. So specifically, the questions are related to whether or not something protects public health, safety and welfare. This is really a very specific, again, please take these as very literal questions. Does the, and does the action item help us comply with the legal mandate? That might be a legal state law requirement, or it might be, maybe there was some sort of a court decision at some point in our past that we are required to, to legally conduct, do some action. And then the community's tax base and general, general revenue generation. So if we want to go ahead into the next. So same, same action items. Is this a sliding scale? No, yes or no? So in this case, this would be an example, yeah. So this is where there's going to be some no's possibly, right? And again, no's aren't bad. They're just, they are what they are. Some of these things might be mandatory and some of them might not be from other. I, I, as, as we go through this, I, please ask any questions that you might have. The hope is that this becomes a dialogue as we're kind of going through these things. Waiting for a couple more submits. Just two more. There we go. Okay, we can move on to the next one. So this is very specifically a legal mandate. So are we legally mandated to increase affordable housing in Tumwater? I would say probably the answer is yes. The Growth Management Act requires us to do that. The Metropolitan Parks District initiatives, that is also a yes. It's a special district that we create, that our community created by a vote. So we've got some obligations to legally move forward with the projects that we identified. Legally mandated, I, I don't, I would agree, I don't think we are legally mandated to develop partnerships. It's a good idea, but it's not necessarily a legal mandate. And the equity inclusion one is difficult because I believe there is, there's some incurred requirements. Maybe there's even some specific requirements in the Growth Management Act to include promote equity inclusion. Is that accurate? Yes. Karen says yes. Did we get to the next one already? Oh, all right. So does it contribute to the community's tax base? Assuming this is a yes, no. So anybody have any thoughts about these, this question?
I guess the question that I would have, I guess, is like, for continuing implementation of like the Metropolitan Parks District, for example, part of having, part of the benefit of having a good park system is that is sort of a draw to have people to move here, to visit the community. They go to a park, if they don't live here, maybe they stop by a store in Tumwater and buy some stuff. Like, how tangential are we allowed to sort of make the connection between an initiative and contributing to a community's?
I think, I think you made an argument for that one to be yes. Because it is, it is maybe not directly, but indirectly. This one might be the more direct question. Right? There is, there is indirect correlation between quality of life and community's tax base. There is, this is a question specifically about revenue generation. So honestly, I don't know if any of these do are specific revenue generators. And that is city revenue.
So Lisa.
Yes.
How might, how might one measure promote equity and inclusion within Tumwater community? How do you measure that in terms of generating revenue?
That's where I, I believe the, this is a specific question about whether or not there's revenue coming in from this particular action item. I, I believe the answer to this question is, is no. For promoting equity, promoting equity and inclusion, it might arguably contribute to a positive impact on the community's tax revenue, the tax base, like the previous question, but in this case, there isn't anything likely to specifically generate revenue. One more submit. There we go. Okay, so now we're going to talk about resources. So this is all about how much the different initiatives might cost in terms of staff time. In terms of the cost of implementing or constructing. If, if we had something up here that was about an action item that was to construct something, is there funding available to construct or implement that thing? And then is there a source of revenue for ongoing maintenance and operation? So in terms of increasing affordable housing in Tumwater, what's the total resource commitment for this? In terms of staff? Great question.
And this one's on the slide.
Okay. Okay. So in this case, the, let me see what I wrote down about this. So if you think about, is there, is, is increasing affordable housing in Tumwater, is that something that we, is an existing effort that has dedicated resources? Or is it a new thing that doesn't yet have dedicated resources? That's the way I would look at this particular question.
Well, sliding scale is harder.
All right. So this question is specific about staffing. And this is a difficult question for me and I think for the directors to ask. Because I'm with, with a couple of possible exceptions, I'm pretty sure that most of us would tell you we don't have sufficient staffing resources. But it, again, this might be another one where you're thinking about, well, do we have staff resources that are, are currently devoted to and working on this initiative? Or is this a new thing that we would have to find more staff to accomplish? Just have one more on this one. There we go. Okay, so do we have funding available to implement these action items? I think the Metropolitan Parks District is a good example of this. Yes, we have, that's, we have a special tax that is collected to help with the MPD projects.
May I ask just sort of an overall question about this exercise? Is, is this designed for us to get a sense of kind of the thought tree and decision tree that staff will be going through when a new initiative comes up? Or is it sort of envisioned that we as council, when a new thing comes up, will be working through these questions as a group entity?
It is, it is the latter. So it is part of the process with AV will be to talk about how you add new things in. Because again, part of, part of the strategy here is, and, and I, the challenge, part of the challenge, I think, is that all of these things you're used to seeing, there really isn't anything new essentially. So, but yes, as, as we are adding action items and or on our regular review process or as council members believe the organization should begin to address something new, sort of midstream. The idea behind these questions is to help the council have a conversation about whether or not that's something that it needs to be incorporated and prioritized. And if, if, if it, it might be incorporated, but it might not be prioritized necessarily above some of these other things.
So for this exercise, for these four different things, these are sort of examples rather than us currently sort of vetting these things that are within.
Yes, because these are from your existing priorities. Yeah, yeah. Yes. Thank you for that. So this is the ongoing maintenance question. We talk about this a lot. It's, a lot of times it's fun to build new things, but you also have to make sure that you're thinking about ongoing, ongoing maintenance. Ongoing things that we have to do. Can't see Kelly, the. Can't see Kelly, the, okay. What happened to the picture there? Did something? I used to be able to see who, how many we had. I'll, I'll just rely on you.
You can still see the thumbs.
Okay, so this is an important set of questions. And in particularly, this is going to be really important as you're thinking about new things. In particular, Michael, as you were first, were just asking about. So if we, if we move forward with this, these action items, what are the impacts to our existing capacity? And are there other things that would have to be either delayed or eliminated if we add a new item? If we work on this thing? So this might be something that's not going to be as applicable again in this particular instance. But the idea here is, it's the age old question. If you want to add something, what are you going to take off? And it's a better way to get at it, I think, because it's a better way to have a conversation. So if we are increasing affordable housing in Tumwater, are there programs or initiatives that will be delayed because of that? Because we're working on that item?
City Administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm skipping a couple of these because I just don't have the information to answer it
So. So which, which ones, which ones, Angela?
Well, it says one skip.
Okay, so how many plans, city projects, programs or initiatives will be delayed or eliminated because of this new item? I don't know.
Okay. I see that.
I don't know.
Okay. Are others feeling like they are having a hard time answering this one as well? I can see a nod from, from everyone holds.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, if this is a question that doesn't work, at least for now, maybe this was like just a question that only gets considered if you're adding, talking about adding something new to the work plans.
Right, because then, you know, you or, or staff would tell us, okay, well, if we add this, then we won't be able to do this. And we won't, and there'll be a delay in designing this or whatever it is.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Jefferson, I, I appreciate that a lot. I think that's the kind of feedback that we're looking for as we go through this process. And I think we can just skip this whole section. And we can use this, this is one of those things that you can talk about with Amy on September 9th, or excuse me, September 20th.
Yeah.
Is that, that's really, when you're, it's, when you're adding new things to an already existing list, that's where that question becomes important.
Right, right. And, and, and it's understood, but so what are we adding? That's going to, you know, be taken away or just better explanation? So I, because I can't make a decision right now. I can't answer the question right now.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And thank you for that feedback. We will make some adjustments in our, our criteria.
Thank you, I've been feeling the same way. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. And it, and those kinds of, that's the kind of questions and feedbacks that I would expect and anticipate from, from this process. So I'm grateful. So this next set of questions is really about, should we or shouldn't we? Should we move forward with something? Are we going to lose out on an opportunity if we don't do something? So let's, let's try this set again, this set of questions as well. And let's see how this feels in terms of, as you're trying to answer these next questions. So if we don't work to increase affordable housing in Tumwater, will there be strong consequences? If we don't continue implementation of the Tumwater Metropolitan, Metropolitan Parks District initiatives, will there be strong consequences?
I like the way you said that if we don't, um, then I can answer the question better instead of are there strong consequences of inaction? So when you said, if we don't, all right, now I know what I'm answering.
Yeah. Now, this is basically the opposite. So are there strong benefits if we do work to increase affordable housing? If we do continue implementation of the MPD? Are there strong benefits if we develop partnerships and strategies? Did you mess up?
Well, now, now it's many benefits instead of few benefits.
Oh. The labels on this slide are messed up.
More points, more benefits.
Yeah. Okay. So, so on this question, if you believe there are more benefits, you should slide it far to the right. The labels on this one were messed up.
Where is that leaving?
Sorry about that.
So Lisa.
Yes, sir.
Some of those questions supposes that the, the city has the wherewithal to mitigate what the question is asking. So for example, if we don't increase affordable housing in Tumwater, including family supportive housing? And then what? So are we saying then that for every developer that comes to the city that asks for a tax abatement, we have to give them one just because there's many benefits to that?
I don't think this question is that specific either. I think it's more like if we are able to increase affordable housing in Tumwater, will there be strong benefits of that?
Of course, there's always benefits, but how do we get there? Or what do we have to give to get the benefit? Because we are not the one building the houses. We only do ordinances.
Yeah. And so, and so the action, the work plan tasks that we briefly reviewed before we started this exercise. So each year, we'll, we will be talking about the ways in which we are going to try and increase affordable housing as they're described primarily in the comprehensive plan. So there's, there's a, there's a level of detail here. And I appreciate, I appreciate your consideration in needing to think about more specifics. But the idea is to increase affordable housing without necessarily knowing specifically what kind of increase in affordable housing that, what specifically that might be. You still have the luxury and the ability, even if you say there's a, there's a, overall, there's a good, a strong benefit of increasing affordable housing in Tumwater. You still have the ability to determine what the strategies are and the tasks are for actually implementing that action item? If that makes sense? We close on that one, Kelly?
One more.
One more. Okay. So this question is about how much of all of these things do we actually control? And I think you're, I think the example of not having a lot of control over increasing affordable housing, unless we're going to go out and build affordable housing, we don't necessarily have a lot full control. We do have a lot of control over the implementation of the MPD initiatives and projects. We do have a lot of control over the partnerships and the strategies that we, that we enter into.
Kelly, can you take me back? I, I, I messed up. I want to change my answer.
You want to change your answer? She wants to change her answer.
Yes.
No, we can't. So, but tell, tell, tell us what you're, what you wanted to change, Angela.
No, like what you just said for housing. I thought that we as a body could say that we want to increase permanent supportive housing. That's what I, and we are doing that. So that's why I was thinking that we have control and influence over that decision, whether we're going to increase the housing or not. But from what you just said, it, we don't have a choice in that.
It's not as much as we would like, I guess. Right? So we can, we can do, this, this is the bound, this is the balance and the struggle with the public sector. It's like we can, we can do everything imaginable. We can, we can make multifamily tax credits. We can make zoning regulations that allow all sorts of density. But if there, if the market forces are not there or if the cost of materials are too high, there's a lot of things that we can't control when it comes to actually implementing affordable housing. And so, so if you would prefer, are you, are you on one end or the other? Or is this, this is also a sliding scale, right? So where are you on that scale?
Using that, we can, you know, by our decision making, I was all the way on the right. But from listening to you, you know, you had to have the developers. And so I would say about a four.
Okay, we will change your answer.
Okay.
Thank you for that. So if we increase affordable housing in Tumwater, are we enhancing what we already offer? I think, you know, one of the thought processes here is like, if you, if you are, if you're going to do something and there's another ancillary benefit and you're, and you're creating a lot of extra value by, to something that's already, that you're already offering, then is that a good thing?
Refresh them onto yellow.
It's been blue and pink and yellow the whole way through, haven't you?
Yeah, I'm puzzled.
An enigma? All right. So is this something that's going to be a new benefit? Increasing affordable housing, is that a new thing that we don't currently have available? So the previous question, we were asking about whether or not we're enhancing something we already have. This question is asking if this action item is something that's going to be a new thing?
I think that for this set of five, I think one and two and four and five, there might be opportunity to condense them. They sort of seem like opposites of one another to where my scores were pretty much the same for each of them, for each of the categories. There could be an opportunity to shorten that teensy bit, to scratch one or two.
Yeah. What's this category again?
Opportunity.
Thank you. We're going to try and get through the last little bit of this one. Then I want to take a pause and just kind of get some feedback from you all on how this is come, how this is coming and whether or not we need to make some adjustments here. How are we doing on this one, Kelly?
I think that's me. I can't get one of these to move.
Okay. Uh, did she just go ahead and hit submit?
Let's skip.
Or skip.
Skip?
Yes.
The purpose is for us to understand the analysis and the framework more so than what the scores actually are.
Correct.
Right? So it's not a big deal if we skip one.
Right.
Purpose is for us to like judge whether these are the right questions based on having to try to do the exercise ourselves in real time.
Yes.
Skipping's fine.
Skipping is fine. So this set of questions is really about whether or not this initiative that we're talking about, the action item that we're talking about, is something that the city should be doing? Or this is something that somebody else has a role to play? So in this case, this one probably is, is a yes. Right? We have the ability and these are things that we should be doing.
Yeah. And if we're like refining what questions we're asking, it sort of seems like an issue wouldn't really come up before us if we didn't have the ability to do it.
So.
Right?
Yes and no. So one example, and I, and this is, there are issues that are, are of importance to each of you as people in our community. Sometimes there is a desire for us to be able to do something about it and it really is outside our scope. And so if some, and, and this again might be another question that is more applicable as we're asking about new things.
Yeah.
Um, and so there might be, so I'm going to use an example. So the, the fresh, the fresh program. That was a Tumwater School District program. We were an active, proactive, very supportive partner. But when the school district was talking about canceling that, the city of Tumwater is not in a position to take over that program and run it fully. Even if it's something we all wish we could, it's not really something that we have, even the subject matter expertise necessarily to do.
Is this one, is this question backwards now, yes and no?
Yeah, one should be yes. According to the other format we've done so far.
All right, so I'm going to do it the way I did it.
So, so is this one also then labeled differently?
Yes, yes, on one side.
Okay. Kelly, are you also taking notes on these questions? Okay, thank you. Almost done on this one? Okay. Okay. So in this case, uh, it's a furtherance of this sort of conversation. Um, and again, we might need to do this when we're talking about. New items, but actually in this one, in this case, it's, it's a legit question, right? So, um, most of these are going to be that we have a leadership call. Okay. This is the last group. This was one that, uh, council member Dahlhoff asked us to add. Because it felt like all other questions were about things other than the environment. So this again is somewhat. Yeah, somewhat opposite, but, um, the question really is here is, are there benefits to the natural envi? And I'm specifically referring in this case to the natural environment. Because the other questions often address other components of the quote unquote living environment. So in this, so the three questions that we came up with for environment sustainability at this point are. Um, does the action item result in benefits to the natural item? Does it result in impacts to the natural environment? And if there are impacts to the natural environment, are there acceptable mitigation measures? So this one is going to be difficult to answer for some of these because it's a little less, they're less tangible necessarily. And once we get through these three questions, we're going to pause and I'm going to ask for some input and we'll figure out, um, next steps. Now, in this case, we're asking if there are impacts to the natural environment as opposed to benefits. Some things can.
Impacts isn't detrimental.
Detrimental impact, yes. Negative, negative impacts.
And so if you think that there's many impacts, are you supposed to stay to the left?
It is, uh, uh, this one's also labeled incorrectly.
No, no, it's labeled correctly. I apologize. It's an under scoring.
Okay, so this.
There are more points if there are less.
Okay. Yeah. So let me, does that make sense? Councilmember Ron Holtz? Okay, good. Okay. So there are more points. On the right hand side, if there are no impacts of an action item.
I did.
Did you spin it? Okay. We'll fix it.
So Lisa.
Yes, sir.
If one were to critically gauge number one, if you increase housing. You increase traffic, you increase CO2 emission. So there are impacts. At the same time, you're doing good.
Correct.
You could also look at it another way. If you are, um, adding more supportive permanent housing. You have less people doing damage, um, inadvertently by living in our natural environments.
That's true.
That's, that's also a very good point. That's the kind of.
You're not paving over the land though.
That's also correct. That's the kind of conversation that I hope we can manage to get to on some of these things. So I, because that's all, all of those things are valid and, and, and right. Last question. So. If there are those negative impacts. If you believe there are negative impacts from these different action items, are there? Is there a possible, is there a possible to, is, are there acceptable, acceptable mitigation measures that can be implemented? Now I can see it.
Moved it.
Okay. Do we have everybody on this one, Kelly?
One more.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So. We made it through that focus area. And so now I would like to have a, uh, a, um. Collaborative conversation with you all about how challenging that was. Um, our goal with this, with this process was to generate conversation for you all. So, um, there was a little bit of that and I, I think, you know, I'm not sure if it's the questions or if it's the format or if there's, um. You know, maybe we're trying to rely too heavily on technology here, but I'm looking for feedback on, um, your experience in that focus area. And then I would like to make a suggestion instead of moving to the next focus area for tonight. Sorry, Jay and Bren. So I'm looking for some feedback.
Clarity in explaining the questions or, you know, what you're looking for. Because there was confusion, a little confusion for me. So when you started explaining it, this question is saying this, or this question is asking this. Um, I found it a little bit, uh. Easier for me to answer the questions because I was just questioning in my mind, but okay, is this what this means? Is this what that means?
Yeah. Thank you.
I think I'm trying to imagine us doing this in real time in a scenario where there is. An emerging issue that council is excited about and wants to try to add to an agenda in some way. It seems challenging, like, like it would take us probably an entire. Two work sessions to probably get through all of these questions and to come to a consensus with it. So I guess what I'm wondering is like, let's say, what, what was the hypothetical scenario that like the fresh program? Let's use that as, as a hypothetical to walk through sort of this sheet of questions. But like if, if staff, so some of these, to Angela's earlier point, are, are very staff centric in terms of technicality. To where a staff report would contain the information about the factual answer to some of the questions. And I think there's probably a set of questions within these that are more values based and legislative policy based. That are probably more in our wheelhouse, like, uh, consequences of a net like benefit, like measuring the benefits of it. I think as like barometers of community sentiment. Our sort of role is to be geared to try to judge what the community wants in terms of like, how important is something in terms of taking action now? So it's, it seems like some of these are probably like, like now, I think before, when we looked at this in June. I was like, yeah, all of these make sense. And now that we've taken the opportunity to go through it, I think like there's some of these that are just literally technocratic. And some of them that are more legislative in nature. So I wonder if like the staff report could highlight the technocratic things. And then the list of questions we would actually go through as an entity would be more brief. So that we would have more of a achievable outlet within the span of, you know, half a work session.
Right. Thank you for that. And I think, um, to that point, one of the examples, documents that we've looked at, which I've provided to you guys all in, um, various, um, like links and such. It's the city of Issaquah. And they have, they have five, five criteria. And, um, the criteria is level of impact. Um, and that was one where, where it talked about, you know, what's the anticipated impact of the action and making progress towards the, the objective? Is it aligned to mission and values? Um, it, the next question is about control over the outcome. How much control do we actually have over this thing? Um, likelihood of success, how difficult is it to achieve it? Cost, what's the total resource commitment? And then timing and opportunity, are there cons- consequences of inaction or strong benefits? So it was five questions versus, you know, so many.
Yeah. Yeah, like, like I, I'm remembering back to at GGC, which council member Kathy will, will recall. When we were discussing what sort of fell below the line of the work plan. We were debating about whether we would get to the tree ordinance sooner or review of the multifamily tax exemption sooner. And we sort of, I, we didn't really, we didn't have a formal structure to use these questions, but we made sort of similar. We had a similar discussion of like, what is the priority between these two things? Knowing that we have limited resources and opportunity and can only address one right now. I'll address the other one next year, the year after. I don't remember the timeline if you decide on. But it, it's the same sort of analysis, but I think that's where like. Our input is probably the most valuable. It's like, what is the literal priority when you're weighing these things? And the question of like cost and resources overarches everything, but it's also not, not our, certainly not my wheelhouse. It's more Eileen's than, than my own. Uh, but you know, that, that sort of thing, I, I think is, is where we have the most. Um, input and opinions and also accountability too, because if the community decide, is upset that we've said that something. Is less of a priority than another thing, you know, that, that should really fall on us rather than on staff. It's unfair for that to be part of a staff recommendation because it's really our decision at the end of the day. We're the ones who are, you know, have to bear that cross at the end of the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for that. Anybody else have thoughts?
I felt like, I felt like the process was a little bit repetitive. I felt like I, you know, just. Within the answer that I'd given previously was part of the answer of what the next questions were. Um, I don't know if that's just the way I was reading it, but, uh. I thought that I was saying the same thing over and over.
Yeah.
In some way. Um. And I, uh, I agree with what Michael's saying. Some, uh, I guess I'm trying to agree with whatever, but I, I'm going to say it. It feels, this feels a little bit removed for me from how we do go about our business. Or the things that I as a council person, um, am thinking about or, or working on or making decisions on. And like, um. Council member, like Michael said, you know, that we did it at general government and realized the community was more concerned about something else. And we were able to talk about that and make changes. So, so I, I'm just struggling to understand what this process. Is going to bring to, um. What we want our final product to be.
I, I appreciate that. Um, Joan, I think, um. The intent is that there has to be, uh, in order to accomplish. Everything that we want to accomplish, there needs to be some alignment on the part of the council as a whole. About what the priorities are. And, and the challenge is that each of you may have your own individual priorities and that, that's acceptable. That's, that's your, that's your. You know, that's your perspective. The challenge for us as staff is we can't, we can't, we can't accurately or efficiently or effectively. Respond to seven different priorities. We need the council as a whole to agree. These are our priorities. Like, like, um, you know, so Joan, maybe, maybe your priority was the tree ordinance. And, um, maybe, uh, Peter's priority was the multifamily tax exemption. At some point in time as staff, we need to know what the group as a whole agree is the, is the order, is the priority. And so the questions really were intended to provide a framework for you all to have a conversation about the things that you value. And, and, and help you develop this priority instead of just saying, well, this is one. The, the other way in which this happens is the dot game. Take your dots and put your dots on the action item that you think is most important, right? Order them and rank them. And, and this was just a different way to get at that results because oftentimes the dot game can be helpful. But there's not a lot of conversation and debate and discussion about where, where you put your dots or why you put it there. And so that there's, there's not as much, um, staying power of the decisions when you're using a dot game. So part of this was really intended to give the council a framework. Within which to have the conversation about giving staff some. Indication of priorities for all of these different things, because we can't do them all. They can't all be number one priorities.
No, I understand that, but there are priorities by, um, not, well, maybe departments or something. And the two examples that you used. Yes, the tree ordinance has been my thing for years and we're finding out that people in the community, it's been theirs also. Now that, that comes to, uh, general government to talk about and so forth, along with the multi-tax. But that is more an economic thing than an environment thing. So under environment. Tree, tree ordinance goes. Under the multi-tax business is, is under economic development. Now, different staff and different people handle different things is, I guess I'm giving an excuse for the reasons that I've harped on those two things. Uh, and, um. I don't think we're asking all of staff to do those. I mean, I, I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm confused, but I, I appreciate what you're saying because, um. Whatever this is designed to do to bring out comments and discussions and where we are and how we can come together to. You know, do the main goals of what it means to, uh. Follow through with what we put down as our vision and our.
Yeah.
So, so I, we're, we're using a different, different way to, um, to get at it and anything new also.
Yeah, feels awkward.
Yeah, it feels awkward, uh, but it's, uh, it's instructive.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I think um I appreciate what you're saying. I think the the example that I gave and the discussion really around those two topics is both of those things were on the long-range planning work plan. And and the discussion was Brad, at the time, planning manager manager was saying th- these are how many hours we have available of the people that are in the long-range planning division and we can't do all of these things. So we, so we we established a line. There was above the line and below the line. And so that's actually a perfect example of why of of a process that you've used in the past prioritize activities. We're basically trying to do that not quite in that amount of detail, but we're trying to do that same thing within these different focus areas because there are multiple departments that are working together to accomplish a lot of these different um uh action items that are identified in these, in these focus areas. Councilmember Jefferson, Angela, did you have a thought?
Yes, yes. Are are you and staff seeing specific priorities come out from this? Is so, is, are they bubbling to the surface?
So the idea would be once we, once we take the results of the MENTI process you just went through, yes, there would be at least a numeric priority. Right? And and then at least it's some place to start in terms of priorities. It doesn't mean that that's where it lands. It's just a way to begin having to show you sort of initially, based on these questions, this is what the, what the numbers tell us your priorities are. So that that is is, you know, that is yet to be, right, we still need to uh compile data in order to be able to look at that. But that was the intent. Peter, did you have a thought?
Yeah, so if I were sitting in your chair and I was going to um take all the data of what we did tonight and use that as inferences to start to inform me where to start, I will have difficulty in doing that because uh what I would have done is I will make sure I can quantify them all. And then I will have a timeline, a a graph, a timeline or continuum, whatever which when I put it, that tells me, okay, for the environmental stuff, for the providing help to the needy, what are these generous scores? So that way, if I put all of, everyone of them in the graph, I can tell myself or inform myself, well, for this particular category, there was a consistent score of nine or seven and above, and that is where I want to start from as for that particular uh category. And then I put on a continuum, how do I see this fitting for my A to Z based upon citing a budgetary constraint or what uh what have you? If I'm doing it that way, I can inform myself, I will pick one or three or four categories that I can identify based upon those criteria that we would start from because if what we did tonight, so for example, um housing for the needy, do we have a, how can we provide that? Well, the only way we can do that is by having ordinances and uh having a, okay, you come to the table, are you going to provide X number of housing within the city for uh for the needy, for low income? And then what are your, I mean, what are, what are you looking at? And then we see how that feel within a values mission and statement. Where now, we won't be able to get there if we have not necessarily identified that with with a quantifiable variable. If we're just saying what are the impact, what are the uh whatever? I don't know how that gets up there. Maybe because we've uh already looked at the data or done the exercise. I don't have it in front of me now, so I'm just trying to recall what we did or didn't do. But um I think if they were all assigned uh non-numerical variables instead of um yes or no, I think we have a readily uh data pool to pick from.
Yeah, the the actual, the way this MENTI program is set up is uh we will have that numeric data. We will actually have quantifiable numbers that are for each action item based on the totality of of the the categories of questions. That's what gets, that's what gets spit out of the the voting process that we just went through.
All right, thank you.
Joan, did you have something?
Thank you. Uh, you know, I was just thinking uh when, when you, when you brought up both the tree ordinance and the multi-family thing. Um, that's a known thing that people know that that, that is important to me. That, you know, that I I'm not really excited about the tax thing and I'm rabid about the other. You know, when people run for office, they say what they want to do, what they think that Tom Water needs and who they are that we are individual people who take those things on. I have never heard, in all the years I've been on this council, us as at a work session with all of the council members here, I've not heard what their passions are. I don't know where they are right now. And are are they still some of the same things you ran on? Are they still some of the same things you're hearing in the community? Um, I think we would work better together if we understand, understood some of the priorities of each other that then we come together to do the priorities of the of the city that we have run for office for and set ourselves to making better or good or answering people's needs. I think it's a level that that we, we have not um shared, so um so you know where someone's coming from and you know, you know, you know how how to talk about it and you know, it it it's something that, it's something that we need that to connects us or something. It's kind of like what's going on in the world, you know? I mean, um, anyway.
I could see, yeah, I think, yeah. The questions, the questions I think are are new. I I would hope that none of these action items are new. Because they're, they come from an existing document. I, they came from the existing strategic goals and priorities that we've been working on for the past several years and 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 inherently, the process that we went through this year um was to take what we had and and incorporate and refresh it to the degree that it needed to be refreshed, but incorporated into a a new and different format that has a bit more structure than than what it previously did. And that could give a little bit more uh uh alignment and and direction to staff in terms of budget preparation and work plan priorities and that type of thing. So I, I hope, Joan, that nothing in terms of the action items feels new to you at this point. We've, we've only done one focus area. I I hear that. But I, but I see where the questions, they may have been inherent in some of the conversations that you've had, but they're new. But I think that there's a lot of value in you all getting to know sort of each pers- each person's, you know, passions. I think that's a good, a good thing to do. I think um having these kinds of conversations actually could if if we had this kind of conversation about these types of issues, I think you would begin to know and you would begin to learn a bit about each other in terms of your particular advocacy and positions. I would hope, I would hope that this process would do that.
That's good. Thank you.
I think what I, what I might suggest is um sort of building on Michael's um suggestion that maybe we go back and we look at the, and pull out the questions that are more legislative, um policy oriented. We can be prepared to answer uh other technical questions uh the next time we go through this, but really essentially pare the number of questions down significantly. And and see if we can do it that way. The only other question I would have then is what about this format? Do you like the MENTI format or would you rather just sit down and hash out each action item and say, you know, based on my answer to the, my answer to these questions, I think this was the number one thing in this, in this focus area. And if we're gonna, if we're going to do that, I I think it's gonna be a lot easier if we're, if we're as much as possible, we are sitting face to face and you all are having the conversation.
I'd rather the latter. Have the conversation um and then it's, 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 it's there because this, this was a bit confusing to me, you know, I would have wanted the priorities there to see what the priorities are so I can rank the priorities. That's important to me and I don't feel like I'm ranking it this, this way.
Yeah, yeah. So if we were pair, to pare down, significantly pare down the number of questions so that the questions are more legislative and policy oriented, which is council's role. And we were to just have you have a discussion around those questions for each of the action items in a focus area. Want to try that next time? Does that sound like a plan? Are 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 you?
I would, I would say, I think that makes a lot of sense to me. Um and I I would just sort of reiterate that when we are having sort of in-depth policy discussions, I specifically for this exercise, I do think it is helpful for us to be there to have those conversations face to face. I I I just think that there is um particularly when we're talking about issues of prioritization in terms of like our passions that we want to advocate for. I think there is sort of a a degree of humanity and kind of being able to have that conversation sort of face to face. So I I would just reiterate that. Um especially with with staff attending to um.
How do the four of you feel about that? Basically, we're asking for, you know, the degree that you're able being in person for these conversations.
Makes it easier to.
Peter, Peter looked stoked. He's thrilled with my comment.
I'm gonna pull a Kelly to say that we have to manage uh, Kelly, how do you put that, manage our expectations? When you expect that we're going to be the all the time, that, I mean, uh, I I hate to burst the bubble, but uh some of us do have other lives too, so we need to temper that with our expectation.
Other thoughts?
Yes, um, can we use um uh traditional survey like Survey Monkey to flush this out? Would that be more helpful? I like MENTI, but how would we feel about that? Would a Survey Monkey be easier? Or what? For um determining the priorities and what we did today? Is MENTI easier?
I think we're more talking about having sort of a verbal discussion and then maybe trying to come to a thumbs up, thumbs down consensus rather than using sort of technology as the primary interface. We can, we can just use group, group discussion, hopefully consensus model in the the before times.
Before COVID? We used to be together.
Right. What do you prefer, Michael? Do you prefer old school?
Well, I was, I was born at the age of forty-five. Uh, I, so I I I think it like having a discussion rather than using MENTI is more fun. Um, I think it supports kind of the free exchange of ideas in a more robust way. Some of the things get sort of lost in the translation when you're just choosing the number.
Yeah.
Um, it just feels a little more democratic to me um to be able to have that discussion and process, but.
I I prefer old school also. Thank you.
So the term with body affect is that body affects can either enhance a conversation or make it worse. So you pick and choose your poison. So what I'm saying is if we're there in person and it made the conversation non-productive, that's, that's one. And if we're doing, uh, using technology and it make the uh, the uh, the conversation productive and more precise, that's, that's, that's an option. But um in terms of uh expert in uh, so if you're looking at my eyeballs, that uh, if if the expectation is that if you're looking at my eyeball, that would make the 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 conversation more personal and more uh, and more fluid. That has its drawback also.
Yeah, I I, there's, there's, there can be pros and cons to both. Um, perhaps what we can do is have, we have fewer policy-oriented questions. Uh, we have a conversation. We can either do thumbs up and thumbs down. Um, or we could have a conversation and have a quick five-minute vote via MENTI at the end of that conversation. And then I think, you know, I I I respect people's time. Um, you don't get paid much. You get paid nothing to do this essentially, and you have a really, really hard job. And I appreciate each and every one of you and the work that you put in and the time and the effort and the thought that you put in. And so I would not want to say everybody should be here or not be here. We, it needs to be one way or another. I think we can um, uh, I I I agree with Michael. That's, that's my preference. Um, I understand Peter's perspective and that's his first, that's his uh preference. Um, so uh let's, let's try to do that. Fewer, fewer questions, more legislatively and policy oriented. Um, for the next focus area, we will do health and safety as the next focus area. There are a few more um action items. You can see all of the action items that are currently in the document that you have in your packet. So those are the action items that we'll be talking about and wanting to evaluate their priority. Um, and uh we will um have a a conversation centered around and oriented around these policy level questions. And then we might at the very end have a quick and dirty thumbs up, thumbs down uh uh or a ranking. We could even, we can rank with MENTI too, right? But we could even, we could have your conversation and at the end of that conversation, we take two minutes and you go in and you rank your action items, one through whatever, one through four, one through eight. And we'll try that at the next council uh work session on the twenty-third of September. And I'm going to suggest that we do that, plan to have two, if not three focus areas if we're going to do it that way. Um, and I think that we can do that because we don't have anything else on that um agenda. I don't need. Does that sound like a plan?
Yeah, what does that, this conversation impact um the meeting on the twentieth?
This, this conversation does not impact the meeting on the twentieth. The meeting on the twentieth is about how you are going to work together to keep this document and the process, it's going to be process oriented and it's going to be timeline oriented and it's going to be you all agreeing to how you're going to um uh approach the, the the oper- operationalizing this strategic plan, making it, making it real, making it um a living and breathing document.
Wow, it's only one day?
Oh, it's only one day. And Amy is a, as a skilled facilitator, you might even get done uh way earlier than what the the stated timeline is. Kelly, did you have anything you wanted to add at all to the conversation? You've been nodding, but, okay. Okay. All right, well, my apologies to the two chiefs. I asked them to be here so we could go over uh through public, uh, excuse me, health and safety and and we didn't get there and um they are uh, they are very grace giving, so I appreciate them.
We all feel safer for you.
All right, thank you. Um, uh, and Mayor, if you want to take over and.
Yeah, so um the only other thing on the agenda is Mayor, City, and Secretary of Department, so Lisa's been talking on some, she probably wants to like, did you have anything specific you want?
I did, I did not. I was talking.
Yeah, and so just a reminder, um, we have um. Yeah, and so just a reminder, um, we have, um, I just want to thank everyone for filling in for me last week. So I'm better now, so, um. So our next meeting will be Monday and we will have a city council meeting, then we will have strategic planning. Also reminder, we have hall fest. And uh then we will have um drop off, cleanup drop off. So we got, even though it's fall, we still have lots of things going on. So, all right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Meeting on Monday.